I call the September 6, 2016, Riverton City Council Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to pay the amount of $480,289.76 checks written for payroll and liabilities in the amount of $446,222.11. Let me just roll this up. Manual checks in the amount of $94,013.71 for a total of $1,020,525.58.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions about the bills?
There were two large payments in there of about $90,000. My only question is, were they for for street projects? One was to Dave's Asphalt and another one was a concrete one.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yep.
That's correct. Those are our 1% projects.
Cool. How are we, uh, we're okay on that, knowing that snow's gonna fall sometime?
Madam Chairwoman, yes, absolutely. Projects are moving along. The Eighth Street project is a little behind, but that's due to the fact that, um, the concrete supplier for the boxes was a little late, so they were delivered behind schedule, but we will get that done before weather hits.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
2016 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Jibben please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? After that, Sean Peterson will give us a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal grateful heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as the City Council and City employees to discuss the needs of the Church. We ask you to please be with us, that we'll be able to have Thy Spirit to lead and to guide us, to soften our minds and our hearts, to be able to look for the solutions that will best serve this great community that we call home. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this cooling weather and the opportunity we have to be able to get out and enjoy this beautiful community. We ask you to please bless the residents here, that they will be able to continue to grow and to prosper. And we ask you to watch over us as we make those decisions tonight, and as we go forward, they'll be able to do things pleasing in Thy eye. And we ask for these saints, how many of our Savior, Jesus Christ? Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Mike. Oh, we had to do a roll call first before I do that. Okay.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Martin Canaan?
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Holly Jibben?
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker?
I am present, and I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Bailey from tonight's meeting.
Your Honor, make a motion we excuse Councilman Bailey.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, I declare that we do have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Your Honor, make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as, uh, as published. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Communication from the floor is next. Anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak at that time. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the Council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. We're down to consent agenda. Would the Finance Director please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, August 16, 2016, Figur Council meeting. Approval of the minutes, September 6, 2016, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, September 6, 2016. And approval of municipal court report for August 2016.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for claims to be paid in the amount of $480,289.46 checks written for payroll liabilities for 8/19/2016 in the amount of $446,222.11 and manual checks in the amount of $94,013.71 for a total of $1,020,525.58.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion we approve, uh, the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Next item of business is the introduction of new Riverton Police Department officers, Derek Miller and Wesley Berry, Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we like to introduce our public officers, uh, to the community and public, so I'd like to invite two of our newest officers. They joined us in about June and, uh, most of the way through their training program. We're just kinda now getting around to getting them introduced. But Officer Wes Berry and Officer Derek Miller, if they could come up real quick. Uh, to my immediate right is Officer Wes Berry. Um, Wes, uh, his brother works at the Police Department. He's been there for a little over a year, I think, now. Um, he worked at the Detention Center for the Sheriff's Office for about five years as the Transport Deputy, and recently was married. His wife is here to pin his badge, and, uh, he's a graduate of Lander High School. We don't hold that too hard against him. And, uh, Officer Derek Miller, his dad's here to pin his badge on. He's a graduate of Riverton High School. He also has his bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice from Hastings College, and, uh, he worked for the Wyoming Department of Corrections for a period of time before he joined us, so.
Go ahead. It's my, uh, privilege to swear in, and, uh, and so if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm. I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming. That I have not knowingly violated. Any law related to my election or appointment. Or caused to be done by others. That I will discharge my duties. Of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
I don't know, but Chief keeps bringing like two every week. This is gonna be great.
Yeah. I think so. Back to us, they're having hard times filling their ranks.
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We like that.
Yeah.
Chief?
Sir?
Uh, these, these are new guys. Have they been to school and, uh, ready to go to work on the street, or they got some training yet ahead of them?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, they have been in their field training this entire summer, and they'll continue that until about October, and they'll attend the Academy starting in January. So about October, we'll turn them out on their own, uh, probably for a couple of months, and make them work the holidays while the rest of us take it off, and then, uh, we'll send them to the Academy in January, so. That'll work out pretty good.
Good. Good.
Baptism by fire.
All right. Look, look like good guys. Um, the next thing is a public hearing and consideration of fireworks permit application for the Riverton High School. Could we get a report from the Finance Director, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, the City Clerk's Office has received a fireworks permit from Riverton High School. Uh, the application has been certified complete, and the fees have been paid. Uh, and the applicant is here in the, uh, audience if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I make a motion we open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. The hearing, I now declare that the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the Council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion we, uh, close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare that the public hearing is closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permit.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the application for a fireworks permit from the Riverton High School.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This is so we can shoot off the cannon, right?
Every time we score. Yes.
Okay. We've been doing this for several years?
Yeah.
All right. Good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item of business is the air rescue and firefighting ARF building expansion and bid award. Public Works Directors, report please.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Uh, coming before you is the bid award proposal for the ARF building, uh, modifications. Um, as you remember, the grant for this, uh, project has already been approved by Council and has actually, uh, been executed at this time. Under the Part 139 license that the airport operates under, we were required to upgrade our ARF truck at the airfield. As you remember, this, uh, truck was put out to bid and awarded, uh, just recently. In fact, it was, uh, this last June when the Council awarded that project. Due to new specifications for that truck, uh, we had to make modifications to the building in which, uh, wherein we housed the truck, excuse me. And because of that, this is why the project is coming before you for bid award. However, staff, uh, made a realization this week that we perhaps have not really fully, um, explained to you why the building modifications were necessary, other than to say that the new truck was bigger and we needed to change the building. So before you, I printed out the actual footprint of the project design, and if you look at Page 2, you'll see the original layout of the current ARF building. Uh, Page 3 shows the new project proposals. But if you look at Page 2, um, with the original footprint, uh, you'll see that designated is the existing door. It's slated at 12 foot wide. The new door has to be increased by a width of four feet to 16 feet wide. So when you look at that difference, you see, uh, right at the bottom of that schematic, the number 12 referencing the width of the existing door. Then you see the added four foot for the new door to accommodate the new truck. Well, you notice that right there, there is a bathroom that's right in the way of that, um, door, and you'll also notice that it impedes into our stair, stairwell into the mezzanine floor of the ARF building, and then it significantly impacts, uh, the office and administrative space. So because of the impact of widening the door, it was necessary that staff, um, displace and then also, uh, remodel and relocate the admin training, support rooms, and personal space for ARF staff. So when you turn the page on to the third page in, uh, those before you, you will see what that new proposal is. Uh, this proposal shows the 16-foot wide door that'll accommodate the new truck that was approved in Ju- in June. Uh, it displaces the bathroom, uh, that is now fully ADA compliant. It displaces the, the stairwell to the mezzanine floor, and then it also expands, uh, the office space for ARF staff. So maybe staff and I take responsibility for this. Did not fully explain, uh, why this project had such a large scope, other than just making the door wider for the truck. There was no way to make the door wider without impacting the other amenities of that building. If you look to the last page, I just thought you'd be interested in seeing the current, um, situation that we have at the ARF building. Uh, the photos on the left show the ARF building in its current state. Uh, the bottom, the bottom left photo shows the ARF building as you approach it to the airfield. The top left shows it as it exits onto the airfield. And then the two right photos show the office space where all in his staff operate. You can see there's not a lot of room there, so if we displaced those guys, uh, to the four feet just for the width of the door and the support frame for the door, um, they really wouldn't have anywhere to work. So that's why, uh, this project had a larger scope than just a door widening. There was no way to widen the door without really impacting the rest of the, uh, the building itself. So with that explanation, um, staff worked with, uh, JAVIATION, the airport consultants, prepare plans and specifications to improve the ARF building. Uh, these plans and specifications were approved and reviewed by staff, and then also by the Federal Aviation Administration and YDOT Aeronautics. With, uh, approval from the FAA and YDOT's, um, bid documents were prepared. Two bid schedules were prepared for this, uh, project. Uh, the first, uh, centered on the improvements to the door and then the office and admin space of the building. The second schedule, um, referenced an optional improvement to the mezzanine floor. And that was to allow for potential training and emergency, uh, areas up above where the offices are currently located. Bids were advertised for this project in the Riverton Ranger, Casper Star Tribune, and on YDOT's bidding schedule. Three prime contractors and 12 subcontractors registered as plan holders for this project. Six contractors, excuse me, attended an optional pre-bid meeting that was on August 4th. However, only one bid was received during the opening on August 17th at 1:00. And, uh, the bid result was as following. It was from SDI, a firm in Lander, for Schedule 1 at $347,451. The alternate was for $43,692 for a total of $391,143. City staff and JAVIATION have reviewed the bid from SDI to ensure that it is responsive to bid documents and specifications, and it is. Um, because of the overage, um, in the, uh, submitted bid total, staff does not recommend awarding the alternate bid and only considering, uh, the Schedule 1 bid, the base bid. Since there was only bid, one bid received for the project, city staff was able to enter into cost negotiations with this contractor. Our, uh, our consulting firm, JAVIATION, did so and went through some, um, engineering practices to get some value out of the building, and from that, um, we were able to reduce the total cost of this project by $33,810. So the revised total for the project, for the base bid of Schedule 1, was reduced at $33,810 to a total of $313,641. Uh, this new bid is approximately 34% above the original, um, estimate provided by the engineers you saw in your packet. So with that being a high bid from what the original estimate was, um, staff had to look at whether or not this was, uh, a project that was within our budgetary means for funding. Fortunately, because we received such great bids for the ARF truck, we have available room in our current budget to award this project as it's currently laid out. As you remember, the FAA has agreed to support 93.75% of this project, and the State of Wyoming will cover 3.75%, and the City of Riverton will cover 2.5% of this project. Um, basically, uh, the original estimate for this project was to have the city's contribution of $5,836.25. Um, we've had to, uh, increase that by $2,000 to cover the overage of this bid. Staff recommends, um, that this project be awarded to SDI. Um, we have conveyed the results with the Airport Board and, um, communicated with them at our board meeting, and then also electronically. And, uh, four members of the Airport Board with one not responding, uh, recommends also that the City Council award this bid. Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Martin.
Sir, uh, I, I know our, our airport staff up there does triple duty, you know, double duty, triple duty, and sometimes even more. Uh, do they have other office space available for them, like over in the building where the, uh, where the snowplow equipment is kept? Or is this their only office space for them to, to use?
Your Honor, this is the only office space that they have.
Your Honor, please?
Just so I'm perfectly clear on this, what all are you taking out to, uh, out of the bid?
Your Honor, um, we were able to go into the cost negotiations, and if you look in your packet, um, JAVIATION did provide a recommendation letter that does show the reductions. The majority of these reductions centered on, um, some of the mechanical work. A bid from a subcontractor was able to reduce their amount. Um, in fact, it was a little inflated at the time of the bid opening, so the general contractor reduced that portion. That's where the, uh, majority of the savings come from. And then we went through some value engineering, changed out some window specs for windows that are still within standard, but a little less expensive. That's really the majority of the savings that you see.
Thank you. Well, and then Schedule, the, 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 the alternate, okay, was to actually finish the upstairs over the office. Is that correct? To enclose that and...
Your Honor, thank you. I, I probably did not clarify that. It was to enclose the, enclose the mezzanine the way it's currently designed, and as it even currently operates, it's an open area with a railing. As an alternate, we thought if we could get good bids, we'd close that off, use that for potential emergency operations center in the future, future trainings, and then just storage.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. But we're not gonna do that.
No, Your Honor, we will not.
Okay. Your Honor.
Uh, Kyle, is this expandable? I mean, in five years, when we have so much traffic and we need, uh, a bigger or a nicer or specifications have changed for the equipment, do we need to go through this one more time, or can we knock out a wall, or is this expandable?
Uh, Your Honor, um, this current design is sufficient for our needs. I will mention in the Airport Master Plan, there is a plan to bring all airport operations close to that current ARF building. So as you know, the orange hangar around the corner houses all of our snow removal and then also our, um, weed control, uh, mowers. I had a hard time thinking of the word mower. So our snowplow trucks and our mowers, those are all, uh, located in that orange hangar. In the master plan, um, I think it's 2025, the idea is to get all operations up to the ARF building. We can address that when that happens, but right now for our functions and for LEO functions, um, the current design is, is very sufficient for our needs.
But that didn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
My question was, is it expandable without going through? I mean, uh, I, I noticed the front. We had to go, we went 16 feet from a 12-foot. We took out a bathroom. Is there the possibility of expanding the farthest wall from the large and making that a 16-foot span? Is the building expandable?
Your Honor, forgive me, yes, it, it is expandable. Uh, one of the reasons why we didn't really address anything on the left side of the building is because the, the structural support, the frame for the original building are located there. We're, uh, expanding to the right, so to speak, if you're looking at the building, because that's the easiest space to expand right now. But should the need arise, yes, of course, we can always expand that building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor. According to FFA rules, we wouldn't have to do this again for 15 years, correct?
Your Honor, that is correct.
Thank you.
Kyle, just, uh, as I read this, I'm just curious, why do you think, or what did the staff move? They're 54% above the original. Do we... Any explanation why? I mean, that's, usually we're under or we're real close to it, and for this one to come at 50... at 54% over, is there an explanation why or just...
Your Honor, I'll answer that to the best that I can. I don't want to speculate.
Right.
Put myself on a line there. But we worked with our consultant quite a bit. And one of the reasons we thought was potentially larger firms weren't really interested in doing such a small project. Smaller firms might have been less incentivized to work on it because of the administrative burden and overhead of doing a FAA project. The other component of that is all the other potential bidders were busy. I personally contacted each of the plan holders, the prime plan holders, asked them if there was anything in the bids or in the bid documents or specifications that say scared them away from the project. They said no. The plan specifications looked fine, but unfortunately, they were too busy for the project at this time.
Okay. I just, I mean, 54%, that's a, that's a big number. It kind of sticks out.
And then if we were to reject that bid and go again at a different timeframe, when we might be able to get more bidders, what would that look like?
Your Honor, thank you for asking that question. Staff explored that option of rejecting the bid and bidding it later. There are consequences to that. Right now, for this funding, we are receiving state apportionment funds. This is different than our entitlement funds. Basically, it's bonus money that the federal government has agreed to put towards our airport. It has nothing to do with our employment totals. If we reject the bid, delay the project, we will also lose those apportionment funds. So it's kind of a catch-22 where you think, well, maybe we reject this and get better bids in the future. But if we do, then our funding source will dry up. We could still use our entitlement monies, but to do so, we would then have to push back projects we have scheduled in our capital improvement plan moving forward.
Thank you. Pardon?
No, you, I probably got the same kind of question that Councilman Larson brought up. I mean, I realize the left wall, you said, is a structural wall. But was there any consideration as far as an estimate on the cost of just moving four feet that way as opposed to quote adding on a whole new addition? I mean, that way, you still have a 12-foot bay for your existing truck and you now have a four-foot extension for, to make for the 16-foot bay? I mean, it would have, did anybody take a look at the estimate for that?
Your Honor, as far as an estimate, I don't have that before me. But we did explore those options. We still would have had to shift to make room for the extra four feet for one door and then pushing out for the other door if we moved to the left. The two structural supports, one sits right in the middle of the two doors currently, and then one sits right on that left wall. So we would have had to shift both of those structural supports in order to make the door available.
I guess you're confused. You already have two 12-foot bays, correct?
Oh, you mean just to move the one on the left?
Yeah. I mean, you, all you need is a 12-foot bay for the existing truck. So all we're doing is moving a wall four feet to give you a 16-foot bay for the new truck. And we're only moving one wall. So I mean, was there any estimate as to what moving the one wall was going to run us?
Your Honor, I don't have that figure. I know that it was not looked at because since that was a structural load-bearing wall, moving it was more complicated than doing the improvements to the right.
Mr. Griffin?
One of the other considerations outside has an emergency gate and a storm drain right there. They would have had to modify those also.
I can't imagine that that's any more difficult than moving drains in your building and restrooms and building on the additional office space, so...
Councilman Canaan, one of the other factors in about, what, three years ago? We did a project there. And we'd already planned where the two fire trucks will park out on a paved. So that was put in there. And then for our future expansion in 2025, all of that is designed to go to the west. So that way, they wouldn't have to redo anything on the east side. So it was just kind of trying to, trying to follow our master plan.
I guess I'm just trying to get an idea as to whether it's, would it cost $300,000 to move one wall four feet?
Your Honor, unfortunately, I don't have that figure at that time. I could follow up with council if that's the direction you would like to give us.
How much, how much time do we have to work on this before it goes away? In other words, if we took a couple days to talk about this and think about it, could we do that and still, or is tonight, tonight?
Your Honor, should council want to discuss this, we're putting the fiscal year for the federal government on stress. I think we could maybe talk about this at our next business meeting and still be fine. We've already executed the grant with the FAA. They've agreed to increase their portion to cover the added costs, so has YDOT. So if the council wants to go that route, we can look at those.
So it would be, it would be important for us to, to get this tied up before the end of September?
Your Honor, absolutely.
Sean?
So we've already approved the 58, 36, 25, correct? And what we're just trying to get now is the additional $2,000 to cover our 2.75% of this project, correct?
Your Honor, from a budgetary standpoint, yes. We've approved those funds or the council has, we have not approved the bid or the contractor.
Right.
In order to approve the bid for this contractor, we would have to find the extra $2,000, which fortunately we have in our current budget because of the ARF truck.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your Honor? I don't think we have a motion.
We don't have a motion?
No.
Boy, I thought by now we'd have a motion.
It's a, it's a new concept.
The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the bid of the Schedule One to SDI for the amount of $313,641.
Second. They're moving seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The next item is council committee reports and council member roundtable. Councilman Canaan, have you got anything for us?
Just real quick, sir. The Veterans Annual Dinner is going to be the 24th of September. It'll be at the Manhattan at seven o'clock in the evening. Tickets are $25 apiece. They're for sale down at Veterans Hall. So they had a pretty good turnout last year with the, with all the veterans, and they're looking for, looking for another good time down there.
Okay. And how about, we got Paws and Pearls coming up this weekend?
You do?
Yeah. Okay. I heard they have a few tickets yet to sell. Supports the animal shelter that the city relies on to take care of animals here in Riverton. Lee, have you got anything?
Your Honor, the only thing I have is that due to Labor Day, it was on the, last Monday, that we postponed our meeting for the Fremont County School District 25 Rec Board until Monday, the 12th. So other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Okay. All right. Mr. Larson?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Your Honor. On the 17th of September, Saturday night, the Hunting with Heroes organization here in Fremont County is bringing in, I believe it's eight combat veterans from around the United States. All these guys are combat veterans, are entered into a program, and they're doing a dinner forum out at the North Portal Fire Hall. It's a drive out there. I did it last year. But it's just an awesome opportunity to see some of these guys who have given so much and been through so much to be able to come out. Everything's provided for them. They're brought out here. There's tags that are donated by landowners. They're given a guide, a place to stay. The food's all provided by this organization. They're just looking for people to come out and to interact with the veterans. So if you can get out there at six o'clock on the 17th, get out there, you know, shake their hand, it just gives you an opportunity to say thank you for what they've done and they appreciate it more than, more than I can mention, so...
Okay, thank you. Holly?
Just to report on the senior center, I definitely think we're headed in the right direction. Jane Nolte from the Lander Senior Center is now the Riverton's executive director. And she's very knowledgeable, very energetic. She's done this for a lot of years, so she's got the experience behind her. They're going to be changing the menu at the senior center, bringing in new programs. They are looking at revamping a little bit with the board and trying to bring in new ideas and that kind of stuff. I don't know for sure how it's going to work with how, as far as Lander having people on the board and Riverton, I don't think we're going to do that just yet. So Riverton will continue to still have their own senior board here. I know that they're talking about doing an advisory board. So I definitely think a lot's changing and definitely gaining confidence every day in them.
Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
You are gaining confidence.
Me. Yeah, that is happening.
It differs a year makes.
Good. Well, thank you. I appreciate your, I appreciate your effort in that. And I hope we can, I hope we can be successful and keep the Riverton Senior Center going and, and still fulfill our responsibility to the, to keep the endowment intact.
Exactly.
And I hope that Ms. Nolte will be able to provide some program guidance from her many years of expertise that will, will help, help that.
Well, and just to clarify that, the endowment is staying with the Riverton's senior center. So Lander won't get any of it, just to clarify that.
That's right. That's right. Well, I mean, we're just about down to where nobody gets any of it.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Mr. Weaver, have you got anything?
Not really, Your Honor. I would just concur with Councilwoman Gibb. We had several meetings with the senior center and, and I'm, I'm feeling the same way. I'm gaining confidence and I think she'll do a great job. And it'll be a little bit of transition period, but in the end, I think that she'll get him back on track and, and we'll have some confidence and better programs. And I think one thing they already talked about or they already voted on is people will be elected by the people instead of other people electing other people. So I think that's a huge vote of transparency right now. So I appreciate that.
So we're going to see some bylaw change or something like that come to us in the future and, and, okay. All right. That'll, that'll, you know, reflect those, those changes, I assume. Okay? It's interesting, I guess it's my turn to talk for a minute. We have seen a drop in the number of mosquitoes considerably. I think everybody around town say the mosquitoes' season's probably over with. But what's interesting is the percentage of Culex mosquitoes in those traps is, is higher. And so while we've lost the aggravating 80s mosquitoes, the one that chase you so aggressively and, you know, try to bite you during the daytime, while we've lost those species, the Culex mosquitoes are still out and about. And we still have West Nile virus in those insect populations. So we still have to be kind of vigilant. That means nice warm evenings. We want to cover up when we're outside, use a little mosquito repellent, pay attention to screens and doors and that type of thing because these guys like to come inside. And, you know, the common name for this Culex stercalis is the northern house mosquito. That's because of their habit of coming indoors and wait for you to go to sleep and take a blood meal then. You'll never notice it. They're sneaky, quiet, easy, gentle biters. And, and so we do have to be vigilant here this time of year. And a couple more weeks, we'll start getting cool enough nights that they will give up on looking for people to bite and, and we'll be done with it. But we still have to have some vigilance in that regard. I want to give credit to the city crews that really stepped up and, you know, with the mosquito fogging, when we, when we had bad numbers in Riverton, you know, just go into twice a week and those numbers collapsed. And so it really did make a huge difference and appreciate the effort that they put in. I assume there's some overtime involved in that. The other thing to mention again would be for the general public is that our Volunteers of America that runs the Alcohol Crisis Center is having a fundraiser in October called the Empty Bowl. And so it's an opportunity for, for folks to, to go and get a bowl of soup or to try several bowls of soup. A lot of people are going to bring soup to this. And, and it's kind of fun to go around and not get a whole bowl, but just get a little bit from here and there and there. And, and you'll get fed up pretty well. And, and it's inexpensive, family tickets, reasonable. And so you can, you can go there and do that. The amount of money, the money that they raised last year was about $25,000. And if you, you know, that is used all for matching money on federal and state grants. And so it gets leveraged many times. And, and that, that helps them run their programs. And, and I don't think there's anybody that can't say that they haven't seen a huge change in, in the way that that center operates since VOA has taken over. I think they've done a great job. I should make notes, but I had three. Those are two, two things. Maybe it was Paws and Pearls, and I already brought that up. Okay. So... No executive session tonight? Well, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
They're moving second that we adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 7:40.